I'm going to cue I T to begin to live stream. I'm calling the meeting to order. I note, we have a quorum. Action items. One, approval of the minutes of the December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, meeting of the fund, number twenty-four seventeen. Are there any amendments to the minutes? Any discussion? Could I have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
So move.
Second. All right, thank you. Okay, I'm all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any abstentions or opposition? Motion carries unanimously. I now move to the second resolution. Resolution of the City University Construction Fund to authorize a preliminary development agreement between the City University of New York and the New York City Economic Development Corporation relating to the design and construction of the S P A R C Kips Bay project, number two four one eight. I will now call on--
Recording in progress.
I will now call on Executive Director Mohamed Ataya to give an explanation of the item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The preliminary development agreement will permit CUNY to progress the CUNY development by setting forth the plan to demolish the existing Brookdale campus, decant from Brookdale, design and construct a new CUNY building, and design and construct Spark Plaza. The preliminary development agreement includes options to ensure the project progress and acknowledges the remaining agreements to be negotiated between the parties to complete the Spark development project. The Economic Development Corporation of the City of New York will construct that CUNY project in accordance with the master plan, subject to complying with the university's right to review and approve related design, construction, changes, schedules, budgets, and payments. Thank you.
Okay, I now call for a motion on this item, please.
So move.
Second it. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have a question.
Sure.
Does this include a P L A? Project labor agreement?
The, we, we need to get back to you, Senator, about that. The Economic Development Corporation will be leading the construction for this project. We will, we'll need to get back to you about this one.
Okay, no problem. Second question. I believe there is some litigation involved, and will that be withdrawn as a result of this?
I'm happy to answer that question.
Sure, go ahead, Derek.
So Senator Stavitsky is, Senator Stavitsky-- Let's just see if it works. There it goes. Senator Stavitsky is correct. Memorial Sloan Kettering issued a notice of claim with respect to Seventy-Fourth Street. It is our view that once they have seen the final drafts of the agreements and understand that, that as part of the arrangement with the Economic Development Corporation, all of the, the debts that are owed to them will be satisfied as a part of this disposition, that that will make their case moot. Obviously, they're holding their claim, and they are keeping it fresh. We have had discussions with them. They have also had discussions with E D C, so they are aware that this process is moving forward. But assuming that the transaction closes, they will not, in essence, have a claim against C U C F or the City University of New York. So we are optimistic that while the notice is still of record, that it will be ultimately dismissed with prejudice once this, this transaction is consummated. But obviously, that's, that's our goal.
Okay. Senator, is that satisfactory answer to your question?
Yeah, since I'm not a lawyer, I don't know enough about the legal issues, but I assume that there will be a release of all their claims.
Yeah, a notice of discontinuance is a closing condition to the sale of Seventy-Fourth Street.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
So basically, Derek, they get their money--
That's correct.
There's no claim.
That's--
They're unpaid.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, I'm now going to call for a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions?
I'm going to abstain.
You're going to abstain, okay, so please--
Since it's in my legislative district.
Okay, thank you.
And should reflect my question, my, yes vote is, intentions are obviously upon lawsuit being resolved, et cetera.
All right, motion carries with one abstention. Resolution number three. Resolution of the City University Construction Fund to authorize the disposition of the site at five twenty-four East Seventy-Fourth Street to the New York City Economic Development Corporation, number two four one nine. I will now call on Executive Director Mohamed Ataya to give an explanation of this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. While the broader planning and pre-development for Spark is ongoing, the transfer of the Seventy-Fourth Street site to the New York City Economic Development Corporation will remove ownership restrictions on North Hall. It will also remove ownership restrictions on the M F A building. The ancillary agreements included as deliverables with the transfer of Seventy-Fourth Street site will resolve the status of outstanding obligations with M S K, the city, and the New York City Economic Development Corporation. Thank you.
Okay, could I have a motion, please, on this?
So move.
Thank you. Second, is there any discussion on this? Any questions? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote, please. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? One abstention, all right, approval of one abstention. I will now move to the fourth resolution. Resolution of the City University Construction Fund to authorize entering into a new leasehold condominium transaction for approximately fifty-four thousand one hundred square feet of rentable space at sixty-three Madison Avenue, New York, New York, number two four two oh. I will now call on Executive Director Mohamed Ataya to give an explanation of this item, please.
Thank you. Brookdale campus will decant approximately about sixty thousand to seventy thousand square feet of classroom and office space by August twenty twenty-five to allow for the redevelopment of Sparks Kips Bay. The proximity of location at sixty-three Madison to the Brookdale campus provides the ability for students to leverage Baruch facilities. The economies of scale opportunity by negotiating the requirements in tandem with Baruch has led to the most economical and strategic decision for the Spark project. This lease is for thirty-two years. The first five years is for decanting of Brookdale, and the remainder is of the, for the lease, will be assumed by Baruch College. Baruch also has a planned renovation for Baruch Seventeen Lex Avenue, the field building, fifth, third, and fourth, which will require swing space. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call for a motion on this item, please.
So move.
Second, is there any discussion? Any questions?
I have some questions.
Sure, please, Senator.
This is very similar to the resolution that-- I guess it's two different floors of the same building, am I correct? The one after this.
Yes, that's correct.
Item four five.
That's correct, Senator, yes. It's the same building for two, two different uses, yes.
And we are renting space in a-- are we purch-- is it a purchase of the condominium or renting the condominium?
It's renting. Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a leasehold condominium, so--
And that's what is a leasehold, is my other question.
Yeah, so, so the way we are, the intent to structure it is to enter into a thirty-one year brown lease and condo that brown lease, so that we would submit the deed for the condo that's subject to the leasehold, the underlying lease, to the Department of Finance to receive a real estate tax exemption. That's the, the logic behind the structure.
And we're leasing and not purchasing because--
It, it's, it's sort of an amalgamation of the two. You put a, a lease, and then you condo the lease, so it's a leasehold condo, and then you take the deed for the, the condo that's subject to the underlying lease, and you, you own that deed, and you submit that ownership interest to the Department of Finance, and because the term exceeds thirty years, they would grant the exemption.
Senator--
And it's thirty-one years to get away around something?
Yeah, you have to show an ownership interest. It, the, of more than thirty years to, for the lease, for the leasehold condo interest to be deemed a property ownership that would entitle you to, you think.
And what do they project the useful life of that building to be?
So can we, I, I think--
I mean, is that building going to deteriorate, and we're going to have to put more money into something we don't own?
Yeah, so Senator, let, let me, let me, I think, I think we need, we all, this, this board a little bit more on explanation on, on a couple of things here. So this project is, there's two projects within this building. One is to allow us to decant Sparks Bay, move the nursing school, so they could build the building on behalf of CUNY for the development of Sparks Bay. And we're going to move the nursing school to twenty, twenty-third street. The second part of this project is connected to an expansion of Baruch College site, what is the site called? Site one A, what's the site?
Eighteen, I think.
Eighteen?
At, at Baruch College where--
Seventeen Lex.
Seventeen Lex, seventeen Lex, which will allow them to be able to do that project a lot quicker. And since Baruch is one of the few schools in our system that's actually showing tremendous growth, this will allow Baruch to have future growth, and, and, and allow for them to continue on the path that they're in, in terms of enrollment. The, the larger, the, the question connected to the building, the university is making an investment of twenty-five million dollars to allow, and on top of another investment that's, that's been taken out of the Sparks development, to allow, this addresses your, your larger question, to allow us to be able to renovate the space for the period of time that we believe we're going to be occupying that space. Now, if, I don't know if you're asking, is the building structurally sound? That I, I can't answer that question.
Well, my question is, are we going to see additional investments in renovating or, or critical maintenance money to fix an old building?
I, I, I don't, the work that we're doing from an interior perspective, we're gonna, it's really going to address that, Senator. That's, that's the investment between the, the letter that the landlord is offering in terms of renovation, plus the, the capital investment. We believe that that's going to be able to allow us to, we, you know, renovate the space or, for new, and we want, that level of investment will, will not be necessary.
Uh, and really, this applies to this one and the next one. It's really the same. To me, it's just different floors. Will there be, be any equity at the end of the thirty-one years?
No.
No, it's a leasehold condo.
It's a leasehold condo.
No, it's like a rental. It's really, we're renting a condo. Is that really what it is?
It is, Senator. What it is, is a legal fiction, because under the not-for-profit law, you have to own real estate in order to get--
That's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, I know you are. And to make it short, you have to own the real estate in order to get the real estate tax exemption. And this structure has been approved for the leasehold interest, because normally, if we just entered into a straighthold lease on this, we'd have to pay the real estate taxes, which would be substantial. So by--
Right.
So by using this structure, we, we save a great deal of money.
But presumably, CUNY's and, or Baruch, or, and I have a question. I thought the nursing school was part of Hunter.
It is. There's two separate deals here in the same location, one for Baruch and one for Hunter and the nursing school. They just happen to be in the same building.
I understand that. I can't see why, if you're using it for educational purposes, you would have to pay tax on this, real estate tax.
No, we, we won't because of the structure. That's why it struck, this is--
If we don't have, if we don't have this structure, we, we will have to pay--
We would have to pay them.
Like, for example, Senator, our current location, two oh five East Forty-Second Street, this is a condo lease. We have a condo lease with the Durs organization. If we didn't have that condo lease in order for us to have our offices here, we would have to pay real estate taxes.
Fine. I have one other, it's not really related question. We, I was at Albany, obviously, this past week, and we've been working on the higher education budget, among all the other budget items that we're talking about. And a number of my colleagues in the conference asked me, how come we're putting so much money, why aren't we building new buildings with this money, which is an issue I have raised in the past? And at the same, and that's a question I know, I, I suspect the answer, but one of my, I don't remember who it was, was telling me, I assume he meant the, the Baruch building at Seventeen Lex. They have a serious elevator problem there, where the elevator just falls four, four stories at a time. To me, that is a jet, has anybody thought of putting some money into the elevator? For elevator safety?
Yeah, Senator, that's the reason we're doing what we're doing. We're, we're the, we're moving, we're moving classrooms from the Baruch space in order for us to undertake the renovation of, of that space, which is, I think it's--
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. I think it is tied together.
Yeah, they're, they're tied together. There are two separate leases here. One, to, to be able to build the Spark building, move the nursing school in here, so they could build the building a lot quicker, so then we could move into a space that we own. And the second one is to move the Baruch space, classroom out of there--
No, I understand that.
--so we could renovate. So I think the answer to their question is, the reason we're doing this is so we could fix the elevators and do those things that we need to do within our own space.
But the elevators are not at sixty-three Madison, they're at Seventeen Lex, I assume.
I understand that, but in order for us to, it's, it's a larger renovation of, of that space, it hasn't been renovated. So we have to move usages out of there. That's why we have to move them into twenty-third street.
Okay. My last question was based upon something that was said here a moment ago, and that's that Baruch is experiencing an increase in enrollment. And yet, the Baruch is one of the five or so colleges at CUNY that is in financial distress.
No, no, they're not, no, they're not, Senator. That's not--
Oh, I'm sorry. I was on Zoom where they are, where it was said to me that--
I, I was, I was on that Zoom with you, and they're not one of the schools. I'm happy--
Want to have to go back then? I apologize.
Yeah, I'm happy to go.
No worries.
No worries.
Go back and look at the power.
It's a lot, it's a lot of information, Senator, no worries. I'm happy to jump in another call with you and walk you through--
No, I'm saying, Baruch is a, the business college has got a great reputation.
It sure does.
All right, I will check.
Baruch is doing great. Baruch is doing great. But I'm happy--
Okay, that's good.
I'm happy to talk to you offline, Senator.
That's fine. All right, thank you.
Any further discussions or questions? Okay, I'm going to call for a vote on this. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Carries unanimously. Okay, I will now move on to the fifth resolution. This is the sister resolution that we just discussed. Resolution of the City University Construction Fund to authorize a new leasehold condominium transaction for approximately sixty-nine thousand four fifty-six square feet of rentable space at sixty-third Madison Avenue, New York, New York, on behalf of Baruch College, number two four two one. I will now call on Executive Director Mohamed Ataya to give an explanation of the item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and as you mentioned, we, we have already discussed this resolution. I, I could add a, a couple of pieces of information regarding Baruch, really, and its enrollment. From twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two, during the pandemic, Baruch College has experienced over twenty-six percent in application growth, and eleven point eight percent in overall enrollment growth, and thirteen point eight percent in F T E growth. According to CUNY Space Data, Baruch College has among the lowest allocable amount of space per student within the CUNY system. Baruch College actually has about fifty-six net assembled square feet per F T E, while the CUNY wide average is about hundred and forty net assembled square feet for F T E. And the rest of the information was discussed already, so, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion on this, please.
So move.
Second, are there any discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Okay. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. I will now move to sixth resolution. Resolution of the City University Construction Fund to authorize the renovation of the Bronx Express at Bronx Community College, number two four two two. I will now call on Executive Director Mohamed Ataya to give an explanation of the item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Bronx Express project will integrate the admissions, registrar, financial aid, and advertisement services, and facilitate a high level of service for students at the advance from admissions through registration and enrollment each semester. Currently, these services are in adequate space and deteriorated spaces that are removed from each other. There is available about twenty-four thousand square feet of existing space to combine and build that space. This project will bring those twenty-four thousand square feet also to a state of good repair. Construction is managed by DASNY and is anticipated to commence in March twenty twenty-four and be substantially completed by August twenty twenty-five. The program management agreement with DASNY requires DASNY to comply with and report on the applicable M W B E and S D V O B goals. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to call for a motion on this item.
So move.
Second, are there any questions?
Yeah, quick question.
Sure.
Quick questions.
Yeah.
Who owns the property? Is it DASNY or, or? And where is it located?
It's located in the Bronx, in the Bronx Community College, in Bronx. The ownership will, will need to get back to you, Senator.
I, that's all right. It's, it's not privately owned, that's all I'm asking.
No, it's not privately owned.
Um, and do you have an exact location? I, I believe, is this, let me rephrase. Is this already open?
This project?
Bronx Express?
No, that, that's a, a new initiative there. Different names carry in, in different, like in other campuses, we call it one-stop-shop in order to support--
No, I know that. I funded one at Queensborough.
Yes.
I, I, I'm familiar with it, but has it opened already or not?
No, it hasn't opened already, and the space is available in the Meister Hall, and this is where we're renovating it, at the Meister Hall at Bronx Community College.
I think she's asking, is the--
Ah, is that a very old building?
Probably most of the buildings--
Yeah.
The Bronx Community College is one of our schools that has, you know, really--
I'm, well, I, that's the building, I believe, where I went to high school.
Oh, wow.
There you go.
There you go.
Probably, it probably hasn't changed much.
At the time.
Maybe, maybe, maybe I should talk to you, give us some insight, so I had a--
No, I haven't been there. I haven't been there since I graduated. I've been to the new one, but not the, not the old one.
We, we're going to have to have you back, Senator.
That's all right. The new one's a lot nicer, and the new one is getting old. Um, yeah, okay, I think that's my, that's the, oh, I know why I asked the question. I Googled Bronx Express, and the, and it came up as a building, as a program that was already operating. That's why I asked the question. I guess she's looking for a new facility.
I think--
Okay, I moved, I have no, no other questions.
Okay, I'm going to call for a vote on this now. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. I will now move to seventh resolution. Resolution of the City University Construction Fund to replace underground storage tanks at Brooklyn College, twenty-nine hundred Bedford Avenue, number two four two three. I will now call on Executive Director Mohamed Ataya to give an explanation of this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The underground storage tanks at the west end of the Brooklyn College campus, north of the heating plant, are approximately about forty-two years old and require replacement. Due to an oil spill in nineteen eighty-one adjacent to the heating plant, soil monitoring remains as an ongoing process. Replacement of the tanks will diminish the risk of potential future oil spills and contamination of the soil. This project would bring four thirty-five thousand gallon underground storage tanks into a state of good repair. The construction will be managed by DASNY and is anticipated to commence on March twenty twenty-four and be substantially completed by September twenty twenty-five. The program management agreement requires DASNY to comply with and report on the applicable M W B E and S D V O B goals. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to call for a motion on this item, please.
So move.
Second, are there any, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I got a question on that. What are they storing? What, what is in there, in the tanks? Are they empty?
They, they will store oil.
Oil?
Oil, yeah, fill for the boilers.
Yeah. For the boiler. Aren't we moving away from using oil and into more environmentally friendly heating elements?
That is correct, Senator, but this is a, a long-term plan that we need to move gradually over, over the years. Right now, the, the utility company would require us in, in cases or in, in times of peak electricity requirements is to move into, or gas requirements to move into oil. So right now, all of our boilers are dual-filling between gas and, and oil, and so in the time being that we will need to, to replace, to replace those in order to maintain the environment.
Okay. Any more questions? Anyone? Okay, I'm going to call for--
No.
I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. I will now move on to the last resolution. Resolution of the City University Construction Fund to authorize design and construction of the fire alarm system at the Borough of Manhattan Community College, number two four two four. I will now call on Executive Director Mohamed Ataya to give an explanation of this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The existing fire alarm system at the Borough of Manhattan Community College is over forty years old and can no longer have fire safety devices added to it or replaced since they are no longer in production. Replacing the existing system is the best approach to address its shortcomings and allow it to meet current Fire Department of New York and Department of Building Code requirements. This project will bring the fire alarm system at B M C C into a state of good repair. Construction is anticipated to commence on March thirty-first and be completed by July thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. This procurement is through the Office of General Service, and the O G S requirements contract requires a contractor to report on and comply with M W B utilization of thirty percent or higher. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to call for a motion on this item, please.
So move.
Second, any questions or discussion of this?
Yeah, real quick.
Sure.
How many buildings are there that have to be equipped with fire alarms?
In this project?
Approximately. I mean, yeah, you, how many buildings are we talking about?
It's, it's the large, the, the largest building in B M C C, the, the large hall.
It's the one building, right?
Yeah, the one that--
Thirteen million dollars seems like a, or thirteen point five million seems like a lot of money for one building to equip it with fire alarms, I must tell you. Is there an R F P issued, or do you have to follow O G S?
We followed the OGS procurement on, on this one and followed its process and its rate. The building, Senator, is a large one, as, as you know, and it's always occupied.
I know, that's why I asked.
Yeah, and it's always occupied by students, and we have to move in phases. This is why it takes a longer time, and that adds complication into the, the project. So it is not just one, one replacement. We, we have to move in segments, and that adds time and resources to the construction.
Any further questions? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna call for a vote on this. All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposition or abstentions? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. And the only final thing I have to add is the next meeting of the City University Construction Fund will be on Thursday, April 18th, 2024. It says four, but it's really two. Yeah.
April 18th at what time?
April 18th at 2:00 P.M. Okay, is there any further items of business? Hearing none, I entertain a motion now to adjourn the meeting. Second.
So move.
Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Motion carries.
Thank you.